We're live and now recording. Thank you Katie, can we begin with the poll call please?
Sure.
Mr. Antonio?
Here.
Mr. Badger?
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld?
Here.
Ms. Kiyabachi?
Here.
Mr. Golzim?
Here.
Ms. Carrie Nikas?
Here.
Dr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mrs. Ginsburg?
Here.
And Harrison Ernst?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent, and one student board rep this evening. Thanks Katie. All right, Vicky and Gabby are going to help us with the pledge of allegiance this evening. Thank you so much for your help. All right, welcome everyone to our March 18th work session. In our agenda, you'll see a list of our prior meetings. We met on February 26th for a work session. On March 4th, we had curriculum and technology meeting, as well as a regular public board meeting. On March 11th, the Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. That was our community listening session. And on March 12th, a finance meeting. Then we listed our upcoming meetings. There are quite a few. On April 2nd, we have our next regular public board meeting, April 15th, Health Wellness and Safety. April 15th is also our next Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. April 16th is our Finance Committee Budget Workshop meeting. April 29th is a work session. It May 6th is the regular public board meeting. May 13th, we have finance and our board retreat. May 28th, a work session, and June 3rd is a regular public board meeting. All right, we will move on now to our presentations. And we'll talk first about our Wissahicken High School monthly highlights.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's been a great month for Wissahicken, so we had our Read Across the World Day. That was great. And for Minithon, over $50,000 were raised for pediatric childhood cancer research. Furthermore, we had a school play. All three shows went great. It was awesome. I was there personally. We had the performance of Pippin. Wissahicken's robotics team got first place in the Springside Chestnut Hill Academy Tournament, and they're now heading to the district championships. And should they perform well there, they're heading to the world championships, which is super exciting. Our indoor color guard team earned first place in the North Penn competition this weekend. We've revised our extended learning time programs to include a Thursday virtual day instead of in person. We were celebrating Women's History Month throughout the district. And we additionally had Career Day this past Friday at the middle school where over 50 presenters, presented to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders about possible careers they could hold in the future. And then finally, we had the conclusion of our Wake Up and Learn Sleep poster contest. And our ninth graders Kami Dugas and Abby Brocklesby got first place.
I have an addendum. One of our board members was president with Wissahicken Middle School Career Day. And he presented to, in an incredibly energetic fashion, a bunch of students on what it's like to be an EMS technician. So Harrison, I saw your person there, and I can tell you that the classroom was, was, you could hear a pin drop as he was cracking jokes and getting them to learn about EMS. I think you were the best recruiting tool for that I've ever seen, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I had a great time. It was an awesome opportunity to be able to share that information with younger generations. That's all I got.
Very nice. Well, thank you for that update.
Amy, sorry, can I add one thing?
Oh, yeah.
The girls' swim team participated in the state championship this past weekend in Lewisburg at Bucknell University. And there was a state champion, Wissahicken Nora Weber, won the 500 freestyle, which is a huge accomplishment to win an individual event at a state level in that competition. PIAA meet, the AAA meet, is one of the most competitive high school meets in the entire country. So a huge honor.
Wow, great. Thanks for sharing that.
And to add to the Wake Up and Learn, so we had Kami and Abby who won first place, but we also had, I'm going to say this so wrong, Lekha Krishmurti and Alexis Dahl Young, who were honorable mention. So we had quite a few participating and winning the poster, and they're going to be coming out soon. So excited for that.
Thanks. That's awesome. Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions about those highlights? All right, again, thank you so much for sharing. I always love hearing what's going on at the high schools, but thank you. All right, so now we have our Lower Gwinnett presentation.
Yes, we have an eager contingent with us tonight, both in, ready to share, and also in the audience I see, to either, we say that these are either showing off or bragging a little bit about what's happening at the school. And it's a privilege to introduce the principal and leader of the school, Mr. Philip Letty, who will share his team and his, and the very, very impressive students. So Philip, it's all yours.
Thank you, Dr. Rustfield. Ladies, gentlemen, esteemed board members. Today, we gather to celebrate some of the achievements of our Lower Gwinnett's finest young scholars. I'd like to introduce some of the students that are from Dr. Sheldon's fifth grade class. We have Ben Borislow, Max Cisera, Pharrell Sakyama, Carly Rivera, Adidi Goslea, Leah Beiser, and Chai Huang. Unfortunately, Dr. Sheldon was unable to be with us this evening, so I asked that two of our amazing staff members fill in her place. We have with us Mrs. Tori Leighton, Mrs. Erica Cannon. So our goal tonight was to shed some light on the fundamental truth in education. That education is not merely about the testing, and it's not merely about the core subjects. It's about instilling a passion for knowledge and fostering a sense of community. It's also about equipping students with the tools they need to navigate positively and positively impact the world around them. So our students were involved in a civics and civic engagement activity that was held across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It was at the Rendell Center. So right here, we have some of the information about the Rendell Center. Obviously, it's to provoke civic education and engagement. Now typically, you wouldn't think of fourth and fifth grade students, but this is something that we were quite passionate about, and Dr. Sheldon was quite passionate about. So at its core, education is about synthesis. The synthesis of information and ideas and that application into the real world. It's about empowering our students and helping them connect the dots between what they've learned in the classroom and the pressing issues that they are going to encounter in their communities. By fostering critical thinking, empathy, and a sense of civic duty, we prepare them to be informed and engaged citizens who are capable of affecting positive change in their neighborhoods and beyond. Possibly even serving on this school board one day.
Right, good evening. So I'm here to just share a little bit about the citizenship challenge and the essay and challenge that the students came together and wrote. Basically, we introduced this challenge to all students at Lower Gwinnett in fifth grade. During our lesson, we taught a fast track seminar on the Constitution and the First Amendment so that the students understood the five freedoms that are protected by the First Amendment. The prompt was really relatable for students, and many students were excited to take on the challenge. And after the challenge was introduced, the students took the lead by researching and writing their own essays. You can see the prompt up on the screen. It says, "In your own words," the students needed to explain the amendment, its importance to Americans, and indicate which freedom they thought was the most important and why. So a number of students from Lower Gwinnett submitted essays with varying points of view about the most important freedom in the First Amendment. The essays were judged on four different areas: focus, content development, organization, and style. And our student that we have here today, Pharrell, her essay was chosen as a finalist. And we would like to give her an opportunity to share her essay with the Wissahicken community this evening.
The First Amendment is the first of 10 amendments in the Bill of Rights. The First Amendment protects these five rights: the freedom of religion, the freedom of speech, the freedom of press, the freedom of assembly, and lastly, the freedom to petition. Freedom of religion means that people can practice their religion freely. Freedom of speech allows people to write and speak their thoughts without the government penalizing them. Freedom of the press allows journalists to publish their work freely. Freedom of assembly allows people to gather in groups like meetings and clubs. People also get to protest peacefully. Lastly, the freedom to petition lets citizens ask for changes to be made in communities or in the government. The First Amendment is important because it ensures our safety in the government and their everyday lives. Doing things like writing a book, making a speech, protesting, or going to meetings are easier to do than in the past, since the government cannot punish us because of the First Amendment. Also, people can do, can be free to do, to be or do anything you want, just nothing illegal. For example, if you want to be a journalist, then you can do it. The First Amendment protects our rights for freedom and equality. I think the freedom of religion is most important because people in the past, because in the past, people discriminated against people because of their religion. Another thing is that freedom of religion is diverse, and people from all over the world celebrate their own beliefs. The good thing about freedom of religion is that the government cannot force you or anyone to be a certain religion. Also, you cannot be punished or arrested because you are a certain religion. People can worship anything they want without telling, without anyone telling them what not and what to worship. In conclusion, the First Amendment is important and always possible. It gives us the freedom of religion, speech, press, assembly, and petition.
So we found out that Pharrell's essay was chosen as a finalist in mid-December. And because of this, the whole class was invited to the National Constitution Center in Philadelphia to tour the museum and perform a creative presentation on Pharrell's winning essay on January 18th with the other finalists from the other schools across our region. Preparing for the presentation is really where the teamwork and collaboration began in Dr. Sheldon's class. The students decided to write a skit and a song for their creative performance, and they also wanted to make posters for their performance as well. Students formed focus groups to work on the various aspects of the performance, and the students practiced a lot. On the day of the event, we traveled to the National Constitution Center in Philadelphia. We saw a live 360-degree theatrical performance called Freedom Rising that told the story of the US Constitution and the American quest for freedom. We also got to tour the other exhibits at the museum. After the opportunity to explore the National Constitution Center, the students performed their creative presentation in front of a live audience of students and notable judges like Judge Marjorie Rendell and former Governor Ed Rendell. The performance was also livestreamed on TV. We are really excited to share Five S's creative performance of Pharrell's essay with the Wissahicken community this evening.
...in ten amendments in the Bill of Rights. The First Amendment protects five rights: the freedom of speech, the freedom of religion, the freedom of press, the freedom of assembly, and lastly, the freedom to petition the government. In the skit, we will be presenting the freedom of religion, which we think is the most important.
Hey, you can't practice your religion here. You must follow our religion.
Hey, you can't say that.
Yeah, because of the First Amendment, I can pray all I want, because I have the freedom of religion. What's the freedom of religion?
Freedom of religion means that people can practice their religion freely without getting in trouble with the law. The government cannot force you or anyone to be a certain religion. People can practice anything they want. This makes us all very happy. You might be amazed what I'm about to say. First Amendment is here to protect our rights. It has my freedom to get away. But if it's you being down, it's here to stay. Because I'm happy to rock along if you feel like you can speak your truth. Because I'm happy to rock along if you feel like you can write your truth. Because I'm happy to rock along if you feel like you can get through. Because I'm happy to rock along if you feel like you can ask it too. It comes good news, talking this and that. Give me all you've got, don't hold back. I should probably warn you, but it's fine. But if it's real, it's safe, what's wrong? That's right, because I'm happy to rock along if you feel like you can speak your truth. Because I'm happy to rock along if you feel like you can write your truth. Because I'm happy to rock along if you feel like you can get through. Because I'm happy to rock along if you feel like you can ask it too. Stop me now, can't nothing stop me now. My face is too strong, stop me now. Can't nothing stop me now, said it, tell you now. Stop me now, can't nothing stop me now. My face is too strong, stop me now. Can't nothing stop me now, said it, tell you now. Rock along if you feel like, rest up, man, if you're wrong.
So as you can see, Lower Gwinnett is not short of creativity and enthusiasm and some natural talent. So we look at what was instrumental in this project, the four Cs, the creativity, the collaboration, the communication, and critical thinking. So with creativity, we have students that are willing to try new approaches to accomplish their goal. Students, they took a historical topic and created a modern-day song and skit that summarizes the importance of it in current day. So with creativity, we are encouraging our students to think outside the box. They need to propose imaginative solutions and present their perspectives in a unique way. Now collaboration. Now, collaboration is the idea of working together to reach that common goal. And I think our students definitely demonstrated that. They need to be able to work together to reach that goal and put their talent and knowledge into action. Now, for an essay, you might not think that collaboration is really a part of that, but it did really play a significant role in this process. Dr. Sheldon was able to facilitate peer feedback sessions where students, they were able to exchange ideas. And they provided constructive criticism to each other, as well as offering a little bit of support to one another. Communication. Now, students were challenged to convey that understanding of the Bill of Rights in writing. The class was challenged to take the ideas in written form and create that theatrical performance that you saw. Now, writing an essay requires students to effectively communicate thoughts, ideas, opinions, or even arguments in that clear, coherent manner. Through this essay project, students practiced articulating their ideas and organizing their thoughts logically and using language to effectively convey that message to their audience. And finally, I think one of the most important, critical thinking. Critical thinking is that practice of problem solving. It also empowers students to seek truth and that self-discovery. The students took the wording and values of something the founding fathers created over 200 years ago and made a connection to its value in present day. So by engaging in this process, the students really were able to develop the analytical skills and deepen their understanding of subject matter that they're not very familiar with. And they were able to become more discerning and informed through that information.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this exciting opportunity, and thank you, Mr. Letty, for sharing our learning outcomes. As you know, some of the students who participate in the event are here with us tonight to share and reflect on their experiences in fostering a sense of community, thinking outside the box, expressing their thoughts and opinions, and engaging in the analytical process. We thought it was extremely important for you guys to hear, for the Wissahicken community to hear various student voices. And now we're going to hear from some of the students in Dr. Sheldon's class about their experiences. So first, we have Chi. Chi, what did you learn from doing this challenge?
What I learned from the challenge was teamwork. We did a lot of work together. Like, for example, writing a skit, writing a song, and drawing posters. And by doing that, we were able to have a fun learning experience. What we also learned was how our religions are different from other countries. Some may believe in Buddha or God, and that shows how different people are. Then we also learned more about the First Amendment. For example, the freedom of speech, religion, assembly, press, and the freedom to petition the government. And lastly, we learned manners like saying, "Your honor." These were only a few things we learned from the citizenship challenge.
Next, we have Pharrell. Pharrell, what are some of the things you consider when choosing the most important freedom?
When I consider choosing the most important freedom, the freedom to petition came to mind because of what citizens ask for changes in our government, our communities, and government. I also consider choosing freedom of speech, because freedom of speech allows people to talk freely, not citizenship, or getting penalized by the government. I think those two freedoms are especially important. But ultimately, I think the freedom of religion is important, because I think that freedom of religion allows more diversity and inclusiveness in the communities around the world.
Next, we have Max. Max, how do you exercise the freedom of religion in the classroom?
We exercise the freedom of religion in the classroom by learning about other people's religions and cultures. People can share with others about what religions they practice to gain a deeper understanding and appreciation for other cultures. In class, we learn about different holidays that people celebrate through picture books and performing readers' theater plays. We learn to respect others' religion and treat each other equally.
Ben, what freedoms are we exercising today by being here?
I'm exercising the freedom of religion by being my own religion and celebrating our own holidays. I'm exercising the freedom of speech by speaking here today and saying the words that I want to, that I would like to say. I'm exercising the freedom of assembly by gathering in this group. I'm exercising the freedom of press by speaking to you, the public. I'm exercising the freedom of petition, the government, by speaking, by being able to share my thoughts and by advocating for more engaged learning experiences.
Next, we have Adidi. Adidi, what was the best part of participating in the challenge?
I think the best part of the challenge was the experience. From the time we figured out we were going to, to the time we spent singing songs on the bus. We were so grateful that we got the opportunity to go to this amazing event. It was so fun to collaborate and produce ideas for the song and skit. And I think that the teamwork that we did use, the teamwork that we used strengthened our class bond. My class is so thankful to be able to go to the Constitution Center for free on a school day, ride a fancy bus with two TVs, get a delicious free lunch, present our class's project, and create memories we will never forget.
Next up, we have Carly. Carly, what was the most difficult thing in participating in the challenge?
One of the most difficult parts in participating in the citizenship challenge had to be during the creative process. My classmates and I came up with loads of fantastic and creative ideas. It was very challenging to pick just one. But even though it was tough, it was thrilling to share what we came up with as a class. Overall, I think that teamwork, the teamwork and collaboration we used strengthened our class bond.
And lastly, we have Leah. Come on down. Leah, how did this experience make learning more engaging?
The citizenship challenge excited the students of Dr. Sheldon's fifth grade class. Challenges like the citizenship challenge are great for students because they engage students more than just textbook learning. It uses real-life experiences that will make fun memories. I think engaged learning like this is great. Instead of listening to a teacher say facts about a subject, you get to be your own teacher. Do your own research and collaborate with professors. This makes learning more fun and exciting, making more students want to learn. I also think that there should be more opportunities to challenge yourself that are open to everyone, not just gifted kids. I believe everybody should have opportunities like this.
Again, I can't express how proud I am of this group of students and the class as a whole. I can think, you can feel how exciting this type of experience was for our students. And I know they are all looking forward to having more experiences like this in WIS Nation. So again, thank you for having us here tonight and sharing a little bit of our world at Lower Gwinnett. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. You guys did amazing. Wow. So how long did it take you to do the skit and the song? Like, how long was that whole creative process? Any of you can come up and share.
So we found out that Pharrell's essay was chosen maybe a couple days before winter break happened. So that was a challenge, because we only had around two weeks to prepare everything. But we spent a lot of time working on it, and we finished it just in time.
So wow, two weeks, and you guys put a song and a skit together. And who, like, thought of this song?
So a lot of the class thought of the song, and like, sections of the class would add on to the song. And so it wouldn't, so everybody had their voice and what the song should be.
Great. Wow. Well, this was awesome. Like, I have to say, so I went to law school, and I had a whole semester on First Amendment, and it was never this cool. We never sang. We never did a skit. So I think I would have paid attention far more if there was singing and skits. But awesome, guys. This was so great. Who else's comments, questions?
I have something real quick. Just wanted to mention, love all the matching shirts. Were those made for this project? Those are awesome.
I just thank you for coming in. I love this. I love hearing from all of your voices. I love how we kind of did something really outside of, you know, the box. And it shows on everyone's face how much they enjoyed it and how much they got out of it. So I agree, this is probably something they'll all remember. And thank you for sharing it with us, because that is so cool. Thank you again for me.
Anyone else? All right, well, we always get a picture. So Deanna, you're a Lower Gwinnett mom, and who hasn't done, gee, you haven't done a picture in a while, right? All right, why don't you join Deanna there? All right, so everyone is welcome to stay. The rest of the meeting will be just as exciting. There will be singing. There will be skits. Maybe. All right, we'll take cookies on the way out. Some of you are maybe staying, maybe. All right, thank you all for coming. All right, our next presentation is a We Off student report.
Yeah, thank you. We have tonight, both our We Off student reps, Gabe and Hannah, to share some update on We Off in addition to some very exciting news. So Gabe and Hannah is all yours.
I can't promise that I'm going to dance or sing this information, but I'll do my best. But on behalf of We Off, we're pleased to present these learning grants and donations to the Wissahicken School District. We're proud of our partnership with the district and our growing presence in our school community. On tonight's agenda, you'll see, you'll see an agenda item requesting your review and approval to accept this donation. in the total amount of one hundred, one thousand and six hundred and nineteen dollars. There are three projects, new dugouts, Fab Lab equipment and STEM skits for the elementary libraries. To accompany the new turf fields at the high school, WE OFF formally donates four new dugouts, helmet racks and benches valued at seventy-five thousand dollars and two hundred and twenty. Each turf field has a new home and away dugout with a helmet rack and bench. A very special shout out to the district facilities team for installing this new equipment for this project.
We are also proud to support the Whistick High School Fab Lab for another year. Through our continued partnership with Lockheed Martin, WE OFF purchased a Fab Bot machine and related accessories. A Fab Bot is a CNC router designed for computer CAD projects. This new equipment provides students with the opportunity to bring their computer designs into real life form with printing and cutting various materials like wood, aluminum and soft plastics. Lastly, we're proud to support elementary school libraries with the purchase of Lego STEM education kits. Each elementary school receives five kits for their school library. Students use these kits when they visit the library. Students engage in engineering, data analysis and communication, developing their skills for critical thinking and collaboration. One final note, please save the date for our annual trivia night event on Friday, May tenth at the Upper Gwinnett Firehouse. More information is coming to you soon, so keep an eye out in your inboxes and on social media. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gabe and Hannah. This is such a wonderful donation to the district. We really appreciate it. Um, any other board members want to comment?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to WE OFF for all that they, um, do for supplementing. You know, sometimes what we can't do, it's just so important. And thank you for, um, volunteering to be the student reps in that organization. It's really important to the district. Thank you so much.
So I feel like I, I love pictures. I feel like we should get a picture with the big check. Let me think. Steve, you haven't been in a picture in a while. You and Zappy, you want to step up and get a picture?
Hey, Gabe and Hannah, did you mention a WE OFF trivia night date? Did you say that or no? Did I miss it? Is there something in the books, like on, on the plan?
Yes, it's Friday, May.
What is it? I'm sorry?
Friday, May tenth.
Friday, May tenth. Thank you.
Steve, you haven't been in a picture in a while. Do you want to go up with, do the picture? You're good? Okay, Zappy, do you want to do the picture also? And Hannah and Gabe, can you stand with them with the large check? Thank you again. All right, we're now at our first public comment period. And no one's here. Is anyone online?
There's no raised hands on Zoom.
All right. All right, we'll move on then to the board president report. And, um, so I have one item that we'll have for, to vote on, um, at our next meeting. And that's approval to nominate someone to sit on the MCIU Board of Directors for three years. Um, so this is like kind of discussion item. I'm currently serving my three-year term and my term ends at the end of June. And I'm happy to continue on for another three years, um, unless, you know, someone else wants to sit on the board for three years. Um, otherwise, you know, I'm happy to fill my name in on the blank, but it's a discussion item for this evening. Is anyone interested?
Amy, do you want to let people know what's the commitment?
Oh, sure.
Board rep?
Yes. Um, so we have meetings once a month. They usually skip one in the fall. It's usually, um, in October, they skip one. So you have one typically every month, otherwise in the summer they skip meetings as well. Um, they have them in person in Norristown, but you can also participate virtually. Um, and they do, if you go in person, there are meals. Um, so they do provide that. Um, the meetings typically last about two, two and a half hours. So they are a little bit lengthy. They usually have exec session prior. Um, let's see what else. They also typically also, like we've been doing, at least during my time, is the person who sits as the representative on the board also is the legislative rep. So there's also typically a legislative meeting and typically that happens quarterly. They don't hold them as often as the regular board meeting. Um, and there are other events that they hold periodically, um, that are voluntary, like they're having, they have something for Earth Day. They have Free Across America events. You're free to go and visit different facilities and they'll do tours with you. But the meeting, the actual requirements are just attending the meeting, which are once a month.
Do you know? That's a, it's a, it's a set job for three years.
Well, what they do is I think, um, there, there's a representative from every district, um, twenty-one, not counting, um, for in Athens, which doesn't count, I guess. And they want to have the candidates be on like a rotating schedule. So there isn't, um, a huge amount of turnover with every election cycle. So I think they do, there's like three, three cohorts. So that's why it's a three-year rotating group of, uh, seats that are up for vote.
Yeah, there's a couple of districts coming up this particular cycle, including the Hickens. Yeah, I mean, unless, again, unless somebody is very eager to serve that three-year term, I'm happy to continue to do so.
It does sound really interesting. I just like, don't have another night for a meeting right now. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue to do it. Yeah, unless somebody was.
It does sound super interesting though.
Was very eager, I'm happy to continue to serve on that floor. Okay.
Thank you for your service.
All right. So Jim, we will fill my name in on that line. Okay. Yeah. Oh, I forgot to mention the salary. Yeah. I forgot the other I left out. No, joking.
It is on par with your school board.
Exactly.
Salary here.
Salary. All right. So moving on, superintendent report.
Uh, thank you. I, I just wanted to say, uh, how proud I am of the Lower Gwinnett students and you saw that enthusiasm. Also very appreciative of the staff. They, they take advantage of this offer. It may or may not have come on the heels of a superintendent hissy fit about how civics is always the subject that gets kicked to the bottom of the line and, and no one pays attention anymore in twenty twenty-four. But, and then lo and behold, we have this. And also it's a, a, a public thank you to the Rendell Center. Um, they keep civics alive and on the front burner all year round. It's not just this competition. They have, they arrange for Black History Month Read Alouds, Women's History Month Read Alouds, always focused on, um, civics and being civil and, uh, how to engage in your community. So I think they provide a tremendous service to all the students of Pennsylvania, not just ours here in West Hickon. So thank you to the Rendell Center.
Thanks, Jim. All right, Assistant Superintendent Report, Dr. Dwan.
Hi, thank you. I don't have any items this evening, but I do want to give a, a special shout out to, um, our Office of Equity and Cultural responsiveness. We pushed out information today about, um, hosting an upcoming community conversation event that's going to focus on listening, learning and leveraging restorative practices. That's scheduled for April seventeenth at six o'clock. So check your email to register. Um, if you're interested in joining us, that'll be an in-person, in-person event. And we're asking people to register right April fifteenth. So I just want to give a special shout out, that upcoming event. Um, I don't have any, uh, action items for this evening.
All right. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, Board Solicitor Report, Michelle.
Okay, we just have one item for, uh, vote next week and it is a, going to be for approval of a settlement agreement between, uh, a family, student and the district.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. And also it's two weeks, right? I'm sorry, two weeks. Yeah.
Two weeks, sorry.
No, no, that's fine. So I want to make sure everybody's clear. Off there watching, it's in two weeks. Two weeks a day, yes. All right, Board Secretary Report, Wade.
Uh, thank you. So at the next meeting, we will be requesting approval of various minutes, including the, uh, Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee, the Communications Committee meeting minutes, the work session minutes, the Curriculum and Technology Committee meeting minutes and the regular public board meeting minutes. And the dates are listed, uh, from February twentieth through March, uh, fourth.
Thanks, Wade. Any comments or questions? Nope. A treasure report?
Thank you. At the next meeting, we will be requesting acceptance and minuting of the treasury report for the month ended February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Thanks, Wade. Any other questions? All right, Seenan, thank you so much. Danielle, teacher report.
Good evening. For your re- review tonight are five items under section thirteen of the Human Resources Report. The first three action items include resignations, retirements, appointments, changes of status, leaves of absence, extracurricular changes and volunteer and substitute additions. Item four is for the approval of a teacher, uh, a teaching assistant on special assignment agreement. And item five includes revised human resources job descriptions. This concludes my report this evening.
Thanks, Danielle. Any comments or questions? Yes?
Yep, just really quickly. Uh, Danielle, the, the number of sabbaticals, is that co- it, it just, I don't know, is that common?
It is a little high this year, um, but it, it is comparable to last year. Um, we're seeing a lot of, um, half semesters, so.
Thank you.
And Danielle, um, is this, uh, replacing a teacher on special assignment at Stony Creek? Is, is that what's happening here? I'm, I, I'm confused by this one.
No problem. I, I'll let you know, uh, what this means. So we do have a teacher that is on leave. Um, and we have a certified, uh, uh, child, child-specific assistant who will be stepping up. They have a certification. Um, they'll be stepping up temporarily, um, to take this, this role, um, and then we'll backfill them in the classroom. Yep.
Anything else? No? All right. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on now to our Communications Committee Report. Zappy?
So, um, I did see that on social media that we had, uh, an eighth grader win the spelling bee and is going to, uh, Washington DC. So that's pretty exciting.
He spelled neuropathy for the win.
I know.
I happen to know how to spell.
I was like, I actually know how to spell this one. Derived from the Greek word, never. Okay. Um, but for real. Uh, but it's a, my big fat Greek wedding reference. Anyway, I guess you have to be Greek to find the funny. But I have no items.
Thank you, Zappy. All right, Curriculum and Technology Committee Report. Deanne?
All right, I think I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dwan.
Thank you, Dr. Morris. And, um, Zappy, I got your reference right away. Um, okay. So good evening. We have one informational item and two action items for review. Our informational item is an announcement of the thirty-day review period for the recommended planned courses following the curriculum review process for science in grades K twelve, applied arts in grade six through eight, and technology education and computer science in grades nine through twelve, along with the respective instructional resources for these courses. These updates were originally reviewed with the board during the Board Curriculum and Technology Committee Meeting on November twentieth, um, twenty twenty-three. In addition, there is one textbook for social studies for our AP Psychology course. Uh, this was an update for the textbook because our license with that, um, current textbook expired and they're no longer reviewing, renewing that version due to updates with, um, the advanced, um, AP course work. So that social studies course is, um, in addition to the work that's been done in science and technology. All of the curriculum documents and instructional materials are available for public review in the Office of Teaching and Learning starting tomorrow and through May sixth. Um, May sixth will be the date that we'll seek board approval for these items at the public board meeting. Anyone interested in viewing these curriculum documents can contact the Office of Teaching and Learning to schedule an appointment. The number there is two one five, six one nine, eight thousand, and their extension is fifteen ten. For our two action items that we will seek approval on April second. Our first is the Special Education State Plan for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven. This plan, as you may recall, was an information item that, um, when we announced the thirty-day public review period for the board agenda at the public board work session on February twenty-sixth. So now it's coming up. The thirty-day review period has concluded and so on April second, we'll seek approval. The second item is to accept the donations from WE OFF, which Gabe and Hannah reviewed earlier this evening during their presentation. So that big check is what they talked about and those items that, um, we'll be seeking for the board to accept that donation. And that concludes our report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Dwan. Any comments or questions?
Yeah. Dr. Dwan, thank you, um, for sending us that memo. Um, I have not gone through it, but I do appreciate, um, you, uh, giving us a cheat sheet on that. Uh, one, two questions really. Um, one, um, how often, and you might not know this off the top of your head, but how often do people come in and look at the materials that, um, are up for review? And if you need to get back to us, that's fine.
I can check with our Office of Teaching and Learning to see what their experiences have been. Um, I do think it depends on the, the content, um, how interested the community is in, um, in reviewing those materials in the curriculum. But I'll check with our Office of Teaching and Learning to see what their experiences have been. Thank you for the question.
Yeah. And then my second question, and again, it's kind of, you know, you probably don't know the answer to this, but I noticed that a lot of, not a lot, but there's a number of technology items. And technology changes so rapidly that what happens if there's like a major breakthrough in animation and people are all using animation software, blah, blah, blah. Um, and it's like not in the cycle of review. Do, can, they still bring in new, uh, content because, you know, technology changed or there's new options for utilization? Like, how does that work?
That's a great question, especially as it relates to technology because it is ever-changing. Um, that would be something that the, the teachers in that department would reach out to our Office of Teaching and Learning or our Office of Teaching and Learning might be aware and be reaching out to department heads to have that conversation and see where would those new resources fit in with that course and what potential shifts might need to happen with the course. So there are some opportunities to make slight changes that it, in response to new technologies or new resources, but it wouldn't result in a complete overhaul or review because that review process is quite extensive and comprehensive. If for good, for good reasons, um, but they certainly would be able to take that opportunity to see what, in what ways they can bring in supplemental resources in the interim. Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you again. We'll move on now to our Facilities and Transportation Committee. Joe?
Thank you. Uh, there are no informational items this evening, but we do have three action items for, uh, presentation this evening and vote in two weeks' time. I'm going to ask Wade maybe to give us a quick summary of each of them, please.
Uh, thank, thank you. Uh, the first item is the approval to accept a donation for Whistick Memorial, uh, excuse me, uh, memorial bench from the Whistick High School class of nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, our Director of Facilities has been working with the class of nineteen seventy-seven to determine, uh, what the best, uh, mix of donated item was. And that's what they, uh, all decided on and it will be a very, uh, positive, um, uh, receipt when it happens. The next item is with the MCIU, every three years we do a trash, uh, removal, RFP, and these are the results. Waste Management, uh, would be awarded the contract for the three-year timeframe, uh, at the, um, dollar amounts that are noted there. And the last item is the request for approval to purchase two transit passenger, uh, buses for the Transportation Department in the amount of eighty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, uh, with CoStar's pricing. And that will replace, uh, two, uh, vans that are approximately fifteen years old and have about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand miles each on them. So they're ready to, uh, to be replaced.
Thanks. Wait, wait a question on the, the trash removal action item. So I understand that Waste Management provided the lowest bid at sixty-five thousand, um, dollars and change. Um, you also referenced the proposed operating budget of fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred, seventy dollars. I guess I was confused. I guess I was confused by having that item there. Don't we have to spend the amount of the contract in our budget?
So he was just listing what he thought it was going to cost, and it is an increase beyond that. So we will have to increase the budget or find that savings in other areas.
Okay, so the proposed operating budget is what's currently in our preliminary final budget?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Hey Wade, I have a question.
Sure.
Joe, were you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
For the vans that we're replacing, did we just go to Coast Star's, or did we look at additional bids for this?
A great question. So we are having, and and so are other districts, having great, great difficulty finding vans to buy. So if I believe that we would be able to do a bid and actually get bidders, we would do so. We've been beating the bushes the other direction, just trying to find anybody with vans that we would be able to buy. This entity has converted vans so that they are appropriate for our use, and we are hopeful that, you know, if the board approves this in the April second timeframe, we'll still be able to get them, and other people haven't jumped in line. But the supply is a real problem right now for us, and bidding just isn't really a method which I think would have success.
Okay. And then I guess my second question is probably null, but there's no chance of us getting a hybrid. I'm guessing.
That's a great point, and I think we could look at that in the future. I, again, the way we got these vans was calling people to find out, you know, how we can get some. So we could certainly say, hey, you know, if is there any way of generating a hybrid vehicle option? And that would be awesome. So I agree with you, but these are not hybrid.
No, that's fair. And maybe for the future, we could put that on a wish list, like if we can try to move some of our vehicles to hybrid.
Yep.
I know electric is still kind of a little far off, but you know, that would be a nice.
Yes.
Addition.
Very good point.
Wait, what's the advantage of buying a van versus, like, I know that, I think first student owns most of the buses that they that we use, correct? So do they do, do they rent out vans as well, like contract out vans to districts?
Yeah.
Or is it advantageous to own the vans of the district?
Yes. So yes, you are correct on pretty much everything you just said. So yes, they do vans. What we have found is that we are more successful with certain of our special education runs, and almost all of the vans that we're running within the district would also have AIDS and those types of situations, and that's been more successful. So we have some other vans that do other things like homeless runs, or a school that has a small number of children. But but that's why. So we do both. They have trouble with supply as well, both van drivers and vans.
Just to double check, this is not part of the capital budget?
I'm sorry, Steve, could you repeat the question?
It's not part of the capital budget. It's part of the facilities budget.
So we will put this to facilities. We are under budget this year because we are not running as many bus runs as we would like. So we have money. We will be under budget, so we would put this into the the operating budget.
Wade, the buses that we're going to retire or that will be replaced, what happens to them? Are we selling those? Do we get a new return on that?
Yes, we we will. We have different ways of disposing of the, you're correct, it's normally buses, but this time it's vans. And we have some that literally just aren't worth anything other than scrap metal, and then other times we post them on eBay and sell them in that way. There's also like a municipal service where you post them and receive bids that way. These are not included in the price, so we will be doing it separately. Truthfully, first what we'll do is declare them obsolete when these arrive.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have one thing real quick. Just to spit on here, just an idea for when we retire these vans, get a little more revenue for the district. We should make them into ice cream trucks. Should explore that idea.
Fair enough. I will, I will.
Yeah.
We will ask the Transportation to run the numbers.
All right, nothing else, right? All right. Again, thank you, Joe, for that report. All right, Finance Committee report.
Yeah, we did have a Finance Committee meeting last week. Again, the the second meeting looking at the proposed budget, a very productive discussion. We'll be asking for, at the next meeting on the second, approval of finance reports. I'm gonna let Wade talk about item seventeen point three and item seventeen point six. Item seventeen point five is gonna be approved of our list of payments, which is also standard. So the other items, Wade?
Thank you. So seventeen point three is every year we by law have to approve proposed, excuse me, basically, it's a proposed budget. And we make that available to public inspection in a formal process. We advertise it, and we send it to the schools and the library, et cetera. So it's a very normal part of the budget process. You know, the the state rules governing this are probably a little bit old, so we've had this posted on our website already for the entire time that we've discussed the budget. But there still is this formality that we need to do, and that's what this is. The budget will absolutely change before it is adopted. It almost has to, because we haven't been notified by the state of certain final numbers. And I know that the board is also interested in reducing the tax rate, so this is very, very much subject to change, but it still does make it, from a formality standpoint, available for public inspection. Seventeen point four is we're requesting a waiver of the policy seven oh seven for two different items. The one is the annual Kiwanis Firework Event. And the date is listed there, July fifth. And the other one is a new one. It is from the Athletic Department. He has been in contact with a group that wants to run a free clinic called the Richie Ashburn slash Harry Callis Foundation, or a free summer camp at the school district. We're estimating the cost there because we really don't have a cost yet for the softball field and the baseball field, but we're estimating approximately two thousand six hundred for that timeframe. That's what it would be waiving in the terms of fees. The last item, seventeen point six, that's a resolution one dash twenty four that was created in conjunction of our financing team with Fox Rothschild and PFM, and it's called a parameters resolution. It's just a discussion item tonight. At the next meeting, we will be requesting approval of it. The reason it's called a parameters resolution is because at the April second meeting, if it is approved, the board would be approving the financing team to sell the bonds on a day that they think, it's basically the financial advisor PFM would tell us, that the market conditions would be best. So we're allowing them to sell the bonds, and then as long as the sale happens within a parameter that we think is advantageous, the bond sale would go forward. I am essentially the last person who has to say, sign off and say that, yes, this is authorized, so it won't happen without a review that we think is in our best interests. Bond sale will occur, and it will be ten million dollars or less, so that they will be bank qualified, bank qualified. Debt has certain advantages. One is a lower interest rate, and two is that it has a quicker call. So it is possible, right now, we are, as we all know, interest rates are slightly higher than they have been in past, say, like, the last five through ten years ago, with a five-year call. If interest rates do decrease in that five-year to ten-year timeframe, and beyond that, truthfully as well, we would have the ability to call the bonds, which would mean we'd be able to refinance them at a lower rate in the future. So that's another advantage of having bank qualified debt. So again, it is, it's a parameters resolution, which is what we did as well with Stony Creek, and there are advantages, as we discussed, in the event of having the financial advisor primarily tell us, hey, we've looked at the schedule, and next Tuesday, A, we think the market is good, and B, there isn't a, you know, I don't, huge other bonds or sell sales events going on, so she would have the ability to trigger it to that day, and we would have the event, as long as it's positive, we would go forward with that sale.
Wade, with seventeen point three, I realize it's just a formality that we do this, but do we put anything on this, we put it out there that indicates, other than the word proposed, which is also next to the word final, indicating that this is not final?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we we can absolutely put a cover letter on it when it goes out and just say, there's going to be significant conversation from the date it's posted, which would be April third, through the the what we believe the adoption date would be, which would be June, I'm sorry, third. So I can absolutely include a cover letter mentioning that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Follow up on seventeen point four. I did a quick look of this Richie Ashburn camp, and I can't really, there's no information about how you qualify for the free camp, so do we ensure that Wissahick kids at least get or residents of this area get prioritized?
Sure.
Is there something like that that we can ask for? And then I guess you raised another question for me. When will we know what our usage fees will be for the turfs?
So I think it will be the next meeting, because I think what we can do is we can come forward. We're accumulating information as to what other fields are running at other districts. So we wouldn't want to be significantly higher or lower. Truthfully, if we were lower, then everybody would want to use our fields from the outside. So we want to be somewhere right in the middle. And then we would bring that to the board, and hopefully you would approve an amendment to adopt seven, that seven oh seven.
So I mean, I I don't want us to, like, be on the top of the grid, but we have a premium, brand-new turf.
Yep.
It should be priced in that way, is my opinion. We paid a lot of money to make it what it is. I don't wanna, like, I don't think we should be looking at fields that are ten or old, ten years old or older as comparable. Like, we we are a state-of-the-art, beautiful facility. We should price it somewhat like that.
Understood.
Any other comments or questions?
Jeff? I just have a comment about seventeen point three, which is our proposed proposed final budget adoption. It almost sounds like an oxymoron, doesn't it, proposed final? But anyway. It's, so it's it's currently designed and built with a five point three percent tax increase, which is the maximum tax increase that were allowed under the Act One Index. And we've had a few discussions on it so far, and gonna have further discussions and budget workshops to talk about it some more. And I think what the budget currently represents is the fact that the district has been growing for the last several years, continuing to grow. Our special population, special ed population, especially those that need, that have higher needs, is growing as well. And there are a number of, I think, initiatives and programs and increased service offerings that the administration and the schools want to see added to to our schools. So all of these things, I think, are, you know, sort of driving the need to increase our budget, to try to afford and build these things into our budget. But with that being said, I mean, you recognize that five point three percent of a tax increase is pretty large, right? And even for me personally, as we continue to discuss and work on the budget, I would like us to try to come up with a final budget that is below five percent. And in order to do that, we're gonna have to make some difficult decisions and choices about what we're going to bring into the budget, and what we might have to reduce or rethink in order to make that work. So what I just wanted to do was just sort of put it out there as an intention, that although it's listed as a five point three percent tax increase, and we expect it to change, I just want to go on the record in saying that, at least my intent personally, is to try to work the budget in a way that ends us up with a tax increase that's five, five percent or lower.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you again for that report. All right, we'll move on next to Policy Committee. Marshall?
Thank you, Amy. We have some items for review in our continuing look at implementing or revising certain policy provisions. If everyone will recall, at the last meeting, we approved the first reading of multiple items, and we will be seeking the board's approval of the second and final reading of certain policies. There are seven of them. This is eighteen point one through eighteen point seven. As I said, they've already been reviewed and accepted in the first reading. This will continue through our next meeting for approval. There is one amendment to eighteen point two, which is policy one oh five point two, which has to do with exemption from instruction. There are a couple of changes. First and foremost, there will be a deletion of one of the paragraphs from the updated policy, as well as an update to the accompanying form. This is based on discussion, review, and comment from the public at our last meeting. So next meeting, we will be seeking approval of the second and final reading of these policies, which we have been reviewing since the Policy Committee meeting on February twentieth of this year. So that'll be eighteen point one through eighteen point seven.
All right. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none. All right, we'll move on to Racial Equity Oversight Committee.
Thanks, Amy. We don't have any items for this evening. However, I do want to recap our most recent listening session, which took place on Monday, March eleventh, at the Penlin Woods Community Center. We had a great listening session that evening. The turnout was a little lighter than prior sessions, but nonetheless, we still had very robust discussions. We broke out into small groups. The night was facilitated by Ms. Latour. In those small groups, we had three primary topics that we covered. They included teacher-staff diversity, belongingness, and district responses to racial disparities and discipline. And so again, these group breakout groups, we had robust discussion, talking about these important topics. The groups included both faculty, board members, as well as people from the public. So there were families and other stakeholders that attended. I think that the end result was that there was great give and take, great feedback, and great discussions around some really important topics. I will turn it to Dr. Dewan, in case she has anything additional to add.
That was perfect. I don't, I don't have anything additional to add. It just, thank you.
Okay. Great. Well, there would, there will be more listening sessions to come. And again, just for everyone's knowledge, these are in response to requests that we have more give and take, more opportunities to hear input from more of a broader selection of folks from the community, not just the people who are able to speak within our listening, our typical committee meetings. So we look forward to more, and hopefully the attendance will be back to normal range at our next meeting.
Great. Thanks, Paul. Any comments or questions? All right. Thank you again. All right, Health, Wellness, and Safety, Rosetta?
Thank you, Amy. No action items, no informational items. Be looking forward to our, our meeting on April fifteenth. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll go now to our report of Board Representatives. Extracurricular Committee, Marshall?
There's nothing new to report this evening. We will be having our next meeting on April seventeenth, and I'm sure I'll have some things to discuss about.
Great. Thank you. MCIU Board Director, I was just checking a second ago, our meeting is actually this week, so I don't have a report, so I'll have something next time. And Legislative Committee, I don't have a report on either. North Monaco?
So the, the board meeting for North Monaco is tonight, so we're, we're not, we're not there. So the the board meeting for North Monaco is tonight, so we're we're not, we're not there. Exactly. They they will be voting on a new director for the for the Career Center.
All right, and oh, any questions about North Monaco? PSBA, Ian?
I don't have anything, except I think we need to figure out some of our things that we want to take or points we want to make, Zaphine Amy, on April eighth, which is coming up.
Oh, and I do have the the goodie bag.
The folder.
Yeah, Katie put together some things for us to take.
Thanks, Katie.
Yeah, we have some together so we can coordinate after spring break.
That sounds great.
Yeah, I started an agenda list, and I can email it to you two so that we can kind of figure out our plan.
Perfect.
And logistics.
Great, thank you.
All right. And then for the employee, sorry, any questions? Let's go take it over from here. Employee Relations Committee, I I have nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we're at our second public comment period. I don't have anything, nothing on mine either.
I have a public comment, if that's all right.
Actually, you can do board members. Yeah, and you didn't submit a blue form, so I wouldn't allow it anyway, honestly. All right, so now we are in board comments, so now you may speak.
I have a board comment. So I would like to start off by saying I'm not totally sure if this is the right environment to voice this, but I became a board rep to speak on what I feel is best for my fellow student body, right? So that's what I strongly feel this is. So I just have a, my question is, I just want to know why students don't have access to the turf? That we sacrificed, why should I start saying, I was so excited for this. It looks so cool. I've seen sports games on it. I'm sure our baseball players have loved it. My friend Gavin Schneider talks to me about it. It was this big project. We sacrificed parking for the first marking period and a half. So I was kind of surprised, like, when I was so excited for this thing, but it only really benefits me if I'm on a team. And I'm not on a outdoor sports team, but a lot of times my friends and I love being outside. And it just feels like when I want to like go play soccer with one of my friends or something, and every time I try to come to the school and it's locked, it's like encouraging me to stay inside and discouraging me from outdoor activity. And I hope I'm not undervaluing the work that you guys put in with Financial Committee. And we talked about how valuable this turf really is. But to students that don't have access to other turf, like, there's no other, no other areas around here that we really have a space to be outside like that. So it's kind of like, like, I don't know, dangling a tree in front of a dog, right? You have this beautiful complex that you can't touch if you're not on a team. Growing up, all my old town, from Miami, and I lived in New Jersey for a little while, and some of my best memories are made on the turf fields in my old schools. Just like pickup sports with my friends. So it's just, I don't know, it's really tough. And I understand there may be a reason, but it's just something I wanted to voice because I really enjoy being outside. And I feel like the cards are kind of stacked against me in that way. And I really appreciate the opportunity in the future, so just something to consider.
Thanks for sharing.
Harrison, this is, it's really funny that you you brought this up because on Saturday, well, on the weekend, sometimes I go for a run. And part of my run is to go to the high school from my house, which is a few miles away. And when I got there, I was kind of excited to like, oh, I wonder if the turf's open. I could do some laps around the turf field. I checked almost all the gates, they were all locked. And I myself was wondering about that, but then kind of filed it away. And you bringing it up just made me remember it. So I'm interested to know, I guess, what's the district policy on general or public access to to the turf or not?
So I I absolutely understand the issue. And we can certainly look at whether or not we have the ability somehow safely open and close assets so that there is more usage allowed. We actually have changed the stadium usage to try to open it up more often so that it could be used by runners or people who want to run around on the fields or those types of things. I don't think that conversation has gotten down to those fields. And also due to proximity, I think there's more concerns about what would be happening because there's not a lot of oversight. But again, we can have that conversation. We can figure out how to do it without incurring a lot more cost and do it safely without, you know, bad things happening on the assets, then I think it's a great suggestion. I just don't have an answer.
Absolutely. And I, of course, am not versed on any of the legal aspect of it. But would it be possible to influence something like, in my older towns, it was just like, use at your own risk, right? So we don't, of course, we want to promote safety and and good behavior in our district. But I think that it'd be a very positive good to have this opportunity. So maybe something like that where the risk is levied on the user versus the district. It'd be something to consider.
One of the concerns, Harrison, great idea. Thank you for speaking up. Obviously, we want to hear from you, anything that it is. One of my concerns is there's a lot of people that walk those trails with dogs, sometimes off-leash. And like, there's a lot of dog feces left around there, which it would be really concerning to me if it ended up on the turf field. I don't know how easy that would be to clean up, and that would then be possibly our responsibility. For example, one, there was a recess where my kids were not allowed to go in the field between Lower Gwinnett and the Administration Building because there was too much dog feces everywhere that owners didn't clean up, and that's a real shame. And I wouldn't want that situation happening on the turf field, and they get out there to play a baseball game, and they can't do it. Do you know what I mean? So there's, I guess, there's just things to consider, which is unfortunate, you know?
I really appreciate you speaking up, and you should feel like you can share with us always. We value your perspective. That's why you're here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any other board comments this evening? No? All right, well, then do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
So I was at Sarah High School in West Philadelphia. They have a turf field, beautiful turf field, because of the pressure from